I would like to call the Monday, December 28, 2015 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. If I could get everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to everyone this evening. Tonight's agenda will consist of the consent agenda, a public hearing for an easement vacation, public hearing for a conditional use permit, a final plat, a site plan design review for DirecTV. Item 678 will be continued. We won't have other business in adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
From Commissioner Wallace. I have a second from Commissioner Sanders. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I will run through the procedure real quick. I will open the public hearing, call for exhibits from our city attorney, ask for staff comments. The applicant will be able to make a presentation. Then I will ask for witnesses in favor of the petition, ask for witnesses that would like to speak opposed to the petition, then have general discussion and questions between the Planning Commissioners, close the public hearing, and then it will be considered for a vote. I would also like to remind, if you are going to speak tonight, speaking to the microphone, you'll have to be sworn in, so you'll have to state your name and be sworn in. So with that, I will open the public hearing for the vacation of a sewer easement, VAC-12-15-5108 for Gaming Partners International. And I will call for exhibits.
Thank you. The city has nine exhibits. Exhibit one is the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner on December 12, 2015. Exhibit three is the application with attachments. Exhibit four is a 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five are the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of this site. Exhibit six is a copy of a letter sent to the property owners. Exhibit seven is Title IV Land Use Section of the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Exhibit eight is the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. And exhibit nine is a letter of opposition from Joseph E. Keen, an adjacent property owner, which is dated November 30, 2015. Those are the city's exhibits.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wright is going to make the presentation. I will let you know he's going to be presenting item two and item four. Three, I'm sorry. No, item four.
Item four.
And we'll be voting on those separately. So with that, take your leave, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you are two requests for Gaming Partners International at 2925 Northwest 7 Highway. The first request is the vacation of two easements, including a 15-foot sanitary sewer easement and a 50-foot construction easement. Both of these easements were dedicated in June 1976, but neither are occupied nor needed. Vacating these two easements -- there's the construction easement there. Vacating these two easements will allow the addition of the GPI facility, which you have previously approved, to move forward. And then the second item is for a final plat for Gaming Partners International. This is a five-acre, one-lot subdivision located at the southwest corner of Northwest Pink Hill Road and Northwest 7 Highway. The final plat has provided all the existing and proposed easements, setbacks and easements on the final plat. And they will also be, as far as the plating process, adding a five-foot sidewalk along Northwest 7 and Northwest Pink Hill Roads. And then they will be financially guaranteed for future sidewalk, future pedestrian improvements at the intersection. The timeline on that is to be determined. That'll be based on when MoDOT can fund the remaining improvements at that intersection. A building permit for the proposed GPI addition will not be allowed, cannot be issued until the final plat is approved and recorded at Jackson County. Staff does recommend approval of case VAC-1215-5108 for the vacation of the 15-foot sanitary sewer easement and the 50-foot construction easement. And staff recommends approval of case PF-1215-5109 for the final plat of Gaming Partners International with the 12 conditions included in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Doesn't look like there's any. Thank you.
Thanks.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? If I could get you to state your name, address, and be sworn in, please.
My name is Dana Bowles. I'm with Cow Valley Engineering. We're at 1840 North Oak Trafficway, Kent City, Missouri, 64098. And I am here on behalf of the client, GPI. We prepared the plat and the exhibits that are here for the vacation. As Matt said, there are two easements to be vacated. One is a 15-foot permanent. The other is a 50-foot temporary easement. Let's see, I don't have a pointer on this thing.
Do you want me to point on the exhibit here? You can just use the cursor.
Well, what we did just to provide continuity for the existing easement was to add a sanitary sewer easement to the plat. This, not a pointer. Okay, so the two easements both occupied the space through here. The sanitary sewer, as it turns out, got built in an easement down here, so it's, there's nothing within the existing 15-foot permanent easement. But just to provide, again, continuity for where that existing easement went, because it does go into the property over here, we added an easement 15-foot along the periphery of the plat back to the right-of-way. So, in effect, we're not losing the permanent easement, but relocating it to the south. And so, again, request the vacation because nothing is built in the permanent easement. The 50-foot was temporary anyways, and so we're just taking that to its fruition of being vacated.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Did you have any comments on the final plat as well?
Just to say that we did prepare sidewalk plan. That'll be submitted at a later date. We'll be submitting the estimates for the escrow for sidewalks. Sidewalks would be constructed as part of the facility addition, so that'll go in in the next year or less. We'll also provide the escrow for the signal improvements. And we are in agreement with all the conditions of the plat. And, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions regards to that, too.
Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Wallace. So what you're doing is you're just vacating those two easements that there's nothing in them right now.
Yes, sir.
And you're just moving them to the south.
We would be moving the permanent 15-foot and vacating the temporary outright.
So any utilities or anything would go then to the new easements, then?
If need be, yes.
And that's to facilitate the layout of the new?
Yeah, the, so the new building actually comes down here, and so that easement would be within the footprint of the facility addition. Existing is far enough outside of it that it wasn't impacted by the construction, but because the other wasn't occupied by anything, it just made sense to move it, and it facilitates project. And by plating, we can provide another easement. So continuity is maintained.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. He could come forward, be sworn in, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Joseph F. Keen. I'm the owner of the property would be west of the deal. The easement goes through my property, both easements do, for that sewer line, was what it was dedicated for. I'm opposed to vacating this because my property is for sale, and I don't know whether a future developer or person would have use for that. The city is asking to take that right-of-way, which they may or may not ever have a use for, and not compensating me for that. So I'm opposed to that because I don't know what the future would be. That is the basis of my opposition.
Okay. Any questions for? Yes, Commissioner Billups.
The fact that they're relocating the easement on their property and still connects to the easement on your property, doesn't that solve the problem?
I don't know whether that would or would not solve it for a future person who may own the property.
If it exits in the same place on your property in either plan, I don't understand how there would be a difference, or could be even.
You're asking, that's predicting the future, which I cannot do.
Yeah.
I don't know whether they would want to have that access, need that easement for something else. It's indeterminate at this time.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Discussion on the record? Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I don't quite understand, again, I'm kind of with Commissioner Billups, too, on this, is that I don't quite understand, as long as that san- as long as that sanitary sewer still connects at the exit point that is on his property, I don't see what the issue would be, because they're going to build this building on top of that easement, if I'm, am I correct with that statement?
If we're remaining, yes.
Yeah, so I don't understand your reluctance on having that vacation, since it really doesn't affect the endpoint.
Yes, you can come back up and answer his question.
Again, there's some value maybe to a future person would own that, buy that property. And you're giving up, asking me to give up that potential future value without compensation.
Okay, but the point that they're vacating is going to be underneath the building that they're constructing.
Yes.
So I see what you're saying is if they, if that construction sometime down the road is taken away, then whoever, if that value supplies to the new owner, is that what you're?
No, quite the opposite. If you vacate it, he builds on it, then it's not accessible to a potential buyer of my property. And I don't know what that value would be. It's just opposite of what you envisioned there.
See, I don't know that it's really affecting your property, because it connects to you. The endpoint is it connects to your sewer.
Yes, but I, as I said, you can't predict what value that would be in the future, not knowing what a person would be doing with my property.
Okay, I still have a quandary, but I don't know how to state it any different than, I don't think there's any effect on your property at all, really, and on the value of your property either. But it's something I just misunderstood, I guess.
Would the city guarantee that?
I'm sorry?
Would the city be willing to guarantee that?
I don't think the city can guarantee anything, other than it wouldn't affect your value, I wouldn't think. That's my own personal opinion. But anyway, that's all I have as far as any questions. It's just a quandary to me.
Commissioner Banks, did you have a comment?
Well, sir, I think, from what I understand, here's what I think, and anybody can jump in. You have your easement. All they're doing is moving their easement. It's not affecting your easement, and they're already going to be building on there. So I think you might think that they're taking some of your property, where they're not. They're just moving their easement so they don't build on it. But they're not, your easement is attached to their easement. And of course, any city can come in and, if they have to repair, it would affect yours, but it would affect theirs. I don't believe, I think what you might think is that they're taking some of your property. They're not taking your property. They're just moving an easement that's recorded on their property.
Once they build on that?
Well, that's their property.
Physically build on that property, on that easement.
They're not building on the easement. That's why they're moving it. They're vacating.
That's where the easement is now. If they build on that easement, you won't be able to use it for anybody, anything else.
That's their property, though. That's not your property.
They gave, I gave, my property also has those same easements on it.
Okay.
And the city accessed, people came in and accessed through that easement this last year.
And they would be able to access theirs as well, because the city has the right to do that.
Yes, well, anybody with a good reason has the right to do that.
On, you're giving the city permission by having that easement?
Yes, they did.
But I don't, sir, I don't think that it's going to affect your value.
I don't know whether it will or not, because that's something in the future.
An easement doesn't really affect the value unless it runs through the middle of the property.
Actually, pretty much does exactly that, because of poor engineering to start with.
Do you have anything constructed on top of the easement?
No, you cannot construct on top of the easement.
Okay, that's their point.
Yes.
Okay.
But once they do construct on top of the easement, if you vacate it, and they do, then you couldn't, that any future access or reason for that would not be available to you once you vacate it, or not to the potential buyer of my property.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the Commissioners? Is there any comment, Ben, you would like to make in regard to the easement? Okay.
I think everything's been accurately stated. I don't want to add.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on the record from the Commissioners, comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And would entertain a motion. Commissioner Billups?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the vacation, VAC-1215-5108.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second from Commissioner Banks. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Kradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye. Motion carries. That will be forwarded to City Council.
Yep.
I would also entertain a motion for the final plat, if you would like to take that one up right now. Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would also move for approval of final plat PF-1215-5109 with 12 staff recommendations.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, too, will be forwarded with our recommendation to City Council. Next item on the agenda will be item two, no, excuse me, item three, public hearing for a conditional use permit, CUP-12-15-110. I will open the public hearing, ask for exhibits from our attorney.
Thank you. The city will have nine exhibits. There are eight listed on the agenda, but there are nine. Exhibit one is the staff report with attachments. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication, the Blue Springs Examiner, on December 12, 2015. Exhibit three is the application with attachments. Exhibit four is the 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, the name and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six is a copy of the letter sent to the property owners. Exhibit seven is Title IV Land Use Section of the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Exhibit eight is the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. And exhibit nine consists of four photos, which are labeled Exhibit 9-1 through 9-4. Those are the city's exhibits.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Wright is going to make the staff presentation on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And I'll also do conditional use permit and then the site plan design review in the same This is an expansion, proposed expansion for DirecTV Warehouse, offices and warehouse at 1500 Southeast 40 Highway. This is located in the Adams Ferry Parkway Overlay District. This property was annexed last year, and then they also went through a rezoning preliminary and a final plat. Final plat was recorded earlier this year. And DirecTV has decided that they would like, they're working on trying to expand, and they'd like to stay in this site. The first request is for a conditional use permit that will allow for storage warehouse use in a light industrial district within the Adams Ferry Parkway Overlay. All uses generally permitted in light industrial require a conditional use permit for the Adams Ferry Parkway Overlay District. Although this use is existing on the site, since they are expanding by more than 25% of their floor area, they are required to bring it into conformance with the current UDC. So that's why they have to request the conditional use permit for this. And then the second item is for the site plan and design review. This would be for a 6,000-square-foot building addition and the associated parking. The 6,000-square-foot building addition would be on the north facade of the existing building of the southeast corner. This building will be used for warehouse storage for DirecTV, as they have outgrown their existing two buildings. The building in the southwest corner is primarily their office space, and then the warehouse space is over here in the southeast corner. They will also be putting additional parking along the north side of the site. There will be kind of a buffer between the buildings and 40 Highway. A minor lot line adjustment will be required for the existing lot to meet the requirements that parking and landscaping be located on the same lot as the principal use. Right now, this is a two-lot subdivision. The existing site is all on Lot 2, and then Lot 1 is currently a vacant lot up along 40 Highway. They're proposing to adjust that lot line for Lot 2 around the parking and berms here. They will have to adjust that to make sure that Lot 2 does have a minimum of 40% open space, which is required as part of the Adams Ferry Parkway Overlay. There will be no new access for this site. It will all be coming off of the existing access drive off of 40 Highway. The applicant has provided the required amount of parking and has provided the maximum number of parking spaces of 78 spaces. And because of that, the applicant has provided an additional 15% increase in landscaping in the parking lot, which is required under the new UDC to mitigate the visual impact of the additional parking. All parking must be paved and striped. However, in select locations on the site, the city engineer may not require curbing to facilitate the desired stormwater drainage on site. There is quite a bit of grade change on this site, which you can see in the images that the applicant has provided for you. Several items in the staff report are noted. They will be reviewed administratively with the building permit plans. Some of those include the required unloading and loading space, an extension of pedestrian access from the parking lot to the new building entrance, site lighting, and the additional site lighting that they may be adding, and then any signage that they may request, which I don't believe they have any signage right now. A landscape plan has been provided. The landscape plan, as you'll see in the landscape table, is short 131 plant units, primarily in the open space count. It is recommended that the applicant meet this requirement by providing additional plant units, particularly evergreens and shrubs along the berms. This will help screen the parking lot and the security fence, the chain link fence that they propose for security purposes. The chain link is proposed to closely match the existing chain link fence that they have without the barbed wire, which will not be permitted. The Appearance Review Committee did recommend that the applicant meet all city landscaping requirements for the development. The building addition is a single-story, all-metal building with a pitched standing seam metal roof. Their goal was to match the existing building as much as possible. They would like this to kind of look like one building. The Appearance Review Committee did express their support for the building addition, because it is a second-tier building with limited visibility from 40 Highway and located in an industrial area. All ground and roof mounted screening shall be screened and included on building permit plans, and they, all screening will be required to be installed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Existing trash and recycling receptacles are not screened on the site. However, when they are relocated, they are proposing to relocate those to the south side of the site, in between the two existing buildings. If those receptacles are visible from 40 Highway when they are relocated and the new berms and landscaping are installed, they will be required to be screened from the 40 Highway side prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the new addition. And then, lastly, the minor lot line adjustment will be reviewed administratively prior to the issue, and will need to be recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit for the new building addition. Staff recommends approval of case CUP-1215-5110 for a conditional use permit for storage warehouse use, subject to the nine conditions in the staff report. And staff recommends approval of case SBDR-1215-5115 for a site plan design review for the 6,000-square-foot building addition and associated parking, subject to the 15 conditions in the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Billups?
Can we talk about the, this movement of the lot line adjustment?
Yes.
I know you said you'd approve that administratively, but I'm looking at this, and I'm not seeing this as a minor line adjustment. It's moving over 100 feet. It's making that Lot 1 very difficult for anybody to use it. So I'm not sure, and I can't tell exactly where the lot line adjustment is going to be. Is it going to be on the fence, or is it going to be outside the berms, in which case it's even further?
Yeah, it'll likely be outside of the berms. The berms will likely be included with this lot. The way that the minor lot line adjustment, it's not so much based on area, it's just based on the number of lots. So they're keeping the same number of lots. I'll let the applicant.
So there's no consideration about the fact that Lot 1 becomes an unusable lot? And part of the basis for the approval by the Overlay Committee was the fact that it's a second-tier lot? If Lot 1 is unusable, it's not a second-tier lot?
Well, they still do have room there to develop Lot 1. I'll let the applicant kind of explain what their long-term plans are. The long-term plan for this could potentially be that Lot 1 would become part of Lot 2. I mean, it would all be absorbed into one lot, potentially, in the future.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Matthew, on the letters of notification, were there any returns on that?
Not have any comments or responses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward, make your presentation, be sworn in, state your name and address? Be sworn in, state your name and address, please.
My name's Russell Moore. 20 Southeast Carolina Drive and Lee Summit. I'm the owner of the property. Matt did an excellent job of laying out exactly what we proposed to do. I've had DirecTV as a tenant for a little over four years. Their lease is up on 8/31/16. They came to me, and they really liked the site. They'd like to stay, but they've expanded beyond what the site's capable of supporting for them warehouse-wise. When they first moved into the site, they were supporting 28 trucks, and now they're up to about 40 trucks. They service all of northern Missouri out of this location. Anything north of Clinton, they service out of this location. Probably about 70 employees. So, that's what we're trying to do in an effort to keep them in the site. Again, Matt did an excellent job from a landlord perspective, as far as the parking lot, to answer the gentleman's question. My concern, too, would be making that lot unusable to me, because obviously, I own the property. If I sign a five-year lease with DirecTV and they move out in the future, I can easily use the additional parking there and build buildings along the front and use that parking for the buildings on the front side, and we can go back to... We can then apply for that lot adjustment to change back. So, that was my thinking for long term, as far as the property was concerned, if that makes sense.
I understand what you're saying, but then we're going to create a problem that we have the building on Lot 2 that's going to have insufficient parking.
On Lot 2?
The building that you're proposing building right now?
Yes, sir.
Is not going to have enough parking if you took that lot and put it back into Lot 1.
Matt, what was the total? 78 parking spots total?
Yeah, actually, they've exceeded... They are at the maximum parking right now. We use the new building, we use the maximum amount of parking that they could, because they needed the parking for all their vehicles. I think if you took away that northern parking lot, the three buildings, the two buildings plus the addition would still meet the parking requirements, the minimum parking requirements for what's existing on that lot right now.
Okay.
And I think the other concern was the aesthetically, and I passed out six copies of, hopefully, a rendering of what the property would look like after the addition. Obviously, if you're coming from east to west, there's no visibility of the property at all, and head-on from 40 Highway, there's no visibility of the property from all. So, your only source of sight line is coming from east... I'm sorry, west to east, and I think that because of the landscaping requirements, there's... And we depicted the plantings is not mature. At mature planting, you wouldn't even see this building addition with the berming that we've got in place on the proposed plan.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? I don't think so. Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will bring it up here for questions, comments, on the record among the commissioners.
I'll make a motion?
Can't have a motion yet. Let me close the public hearing, and then you can.
Go ahead.
I will close the public hearing, and then I would entertain a motion.
I tried that last week, James.
And I've done it before, too, so.
I'm trying to figure out what's in here. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval for conditional use permit, CUP-12-15-5110, with all the staff recommendations.
Nine staff recommendations? I have a motion from Commissioner Wallace. Do I have a second from Commissioner Haney? This will be a roll call vote.
Yes. All right. Planning Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartalata?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the site plan and design review for DirecTV. I would entertain a motion for that approval.
Can I do that one, too?
You sure can. Just keep it going, Commissioner Wallace.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for approval for site plan and design review, SPDR-12-15-5115 for DirecTV, with the staff recommendations.
15 of them?
15 of them.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Wallace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Haney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item 6, 7, and 8, as I stated earlier, those are being continued until our January 11th meeting, which brings us to other business. Mr. Allen, do you have anything under other business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, again, a reminder that by that January 11th meeting, be sure to get your name in the hat, as it were, with Karen, if you're interested in attending the 2016 National Planning Conference, which will be in Phoenix, the first weekend in April, so it's the weekend after Easter weekend. So, I know for Blue Springs schools, it's at the tail end of their spring break, for what it's worth. And I think we do have a few folks who've already mentioned that, but if you're thinking about it here over the holidays, just let Karen know, but certainly no later than our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any other business they would like to bring forward? Okay. I would just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I'll see you back here next year on January 11th. And with that, I would entertain a... Mr. Billups?
Speaking of that, really quickly.
Yes.
I did see that the council actually got to meet in the new chambers last week for a meeting.
Oh. I don't think we're quite that lucky yet.
Are we getting close?
My understanding...
May I clarify? We actually did not meet in the chamber, the chamber itself. We may have been in an executive boardroom.
You were still in the building.
But we were under police escort to be in the building, so I just want to let you know that.
That's a good question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe sometime in February is when we're looking at possibly moving over, so certainly no sooner than that. So, at least, the very least, our next two meetings will be in this location, if not additional meetings beyond that, so.
Okay.
We will certainly let you know. We will not fake you out and start meeting there without letting you know. So, but stay tuned, but certainly, City Council will get first dibs on meeting there, so once you see them starting to meet there, we will not be far behind.
Okay. Any other business? I would entertain a motion for adjournment. I have a motion from Commissioner Bartalata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Was that Commissioner Peel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.